We are going to continue where we left off, which was item 7.3. Consideration of update on status of activity for Proposition 64 grants, Cohorts 1 and 3 for illegal cannabis abatement and internal policy development in progress. Director Turner.
Thank you. So this item, we're excited to bring an update to the board regarding the activities that have taken place to satisfy the tasks that were approved within two separate illegal cannabis abatement grants, Cohorts 1 and 3. Additionally, after, I'll turn that over to our Deputy Administrator Shannon Walker-Smith for that update, since she's really good with the numbers. And she'll walk you through both the tools that we have procured to assist our staff in illegal cannabis abatement. Then I'll take back the microphone and cover a couple internal policies that are currently in development for, that will provide us with additional transparency in those activities as well as protecting staff. I'll turn it over to Deputy Administrator Walker-Smith.
Thank you so much. So you have in front of you a handout I prepared that outlines the funding and the results of that funding that have taken place since 2020. So in October of 2020, we were awarded Cohort 1 grant. It's funded through Proposition 64 funds through the Board of State and Community Corrections, or BSCC. Patrick Sullivan was the original project writer and project director of that grant in the era prior to Director Turner. And that was a three-year grant. The budget for that grant was $996,173, so almost $1 million over three years. That, that grant is a two-parter, so some of the money comes into CDD to do the illegal cannabis enforcement, as Director Turner alluded to. The other part of the grant is a subcontract for education services and case management services that are being provided through Healthy Start at the Lake County Office of Education through their family wrap program, which they do a similar program with probation. So you can see the two goals and objectives that were approved in the Cohort 1 grant. And then following that on the first page is an outline of both the proposed budget, that's the budget that was submitted with the grant application, and the modified budget that we requested when I came on board to replace Patrick as project director. Then on page 2, because we have wrapped up those, that Cohort 1 grant, you have our complete grant term expenditures for that project from grant years 1920 through 2324. About half of the money went out to LCOE for the wrap services, and the remainder was spent on cannabis code enforcement. In the very beginning of that grant, one officer was planned, and then there was a lot of time where there were no staff on the grant. In January of '22, we got, finally replaced the first officer that came onto the project. And so there were about 10 months where it was being run by one officer, and then in that modification, a second officer was requested, and we staffed that position in October of '22. That was the first time the project was fully staffed. And then in addition to that, funds were used to procure satellite imagery through a product called Planet Labs. And in addition to that, our Acela licenses were paid for. That was the database that we are, continue to use, but we're, we're very close to a transition over to a new software. In addition to that, we bought desktop computers, cell phones, satellite phones, cameras, thermal imaging camera, laptops, a setup for mobile printing, body cameras, drones, and a few other tools. In addition, our cell service for those two officers and vehicle mileage was paid for out of grant funds. A Ford Escape was purchased out of Cohort 1 funds. We hired an outside evaluator to help us finalize our local evaluation report at the end of Cohort 1. That evaluator stays on board now for Cohort 3 and continues to help us look at and verify data. And officers also attended training through KCO, which is the Professional Development Organization for Code Enforcement Officers. And then the last expense under Cohort 1 was the required audit, which was recently completed and submitted. So of the $996,000 we were awarded, we were able to pull down $944,000 of that based on approved expenses. Accomplishments during that time is on the top of page 3. As I mentioned, we purchased satellite imagery, software, a vehicle, the mobile installation of printers. And drones were one of the last purchases under Cohort 3. I mean Cohort 1, it was intended for us to start the drone program with Cohort 3 funds, but we had some additional funds, and our funder allowed us to do kind of a pre-purchase on those drones. 200, 2,686 cannabis code enforcement activities were completed during that three years, including 736 illegal sites were identified, and 24,605 plants, that should say plants, were eradicated. There were 860 violations that were identified, and 509 inspections of the 736 sites. And then 28,000 plants identified, and of course, it was the 24,000 of the 28 that were eradicated. And then resolution of complaints in the community, so the 736 sites that were identified came out of 197 complaints, and then of course, our own department work. And of those 197 complaints, 185 cases were opened and closed out of, out of the 197. So that was the end of the Cohort 1 grant. And then the Cohort 1 and Cohort 3 grants overlapped by a little bit. The way they offer these in rounds are not exact from beginning to end. So we were awarded the Cohort 3 grant in May of '23 for five years, which would equal a closeout period of April 30th, 2028. But we couldn't overlap services between the two grants since they were for the same, basically the same activities. So we held off spending Cohort 3 money until we had wrapped up Cohort 1. And so we, we started Cohort 3 in October of '23. The goals and objectives that were approved for Cohort 3 are roughly equivalent to, little bit of languaging there, but pretty much the same as the goals and objectives of the Cohort 1 grant. On the next page, you'll see both the proposed budget for that five-year grant in the column labeled Budget. And then in the next column where it says Prior Expenditures, it's really just indicating that these were expenditures through this reporting period, which ended on 6/30. So of the money that is budgeted, the grant will continue to fund two cannabis code enforcement officers. We have also added in Cohort 3 a full-time office assistant to support those officers' work, and that person mostly does, handles phone calls and does mailing. The grant will continue to support needed equipment, replacement computers, drones, Kevlar vests, laser measure uniforms, office supplies, et cetera. A second code enforcement, cannabis code enforcement vehicle has been approved to be purchased with Cohort 3 funds, and that vehicle is on order. We continue to work with an outside evaluator to look at data on a quarterly basis and verify, especially with the County Office of Education, so that outside evaluator works with both CDD and the County Office of Education to help us compile and verify quarterly reports. Additionally, through these funds, it's one of, these funds are one of the major reasons we were able to move to contract with OpenGov, which will be our new database for all three divisions in CDD. A large chunk of the original contract, the implementation money, kind of the outset money that happened, or was required through that contract, was paid for out of these funds with approval from our funder. So Acela has been inadequate for code enforcement, as I know you guys are aware. We're very excited that we're about nine months into the implementation, eight months into the implementation of OpenGov, and code enforcement will be the first division to go live, and that will happen next month. And that will give us increased transparency, increased ability to track cases and do quality case management, as well as provide the data for the reports needed for this grant. In the other category, that again is mostly training. Our officers are undergoing drone pilot certification. And in addition to that, the training will include additional KCO modules and EPA training. And then there will be a required audit at the end of this five-year period as well. I don't have it in here because it's not a product funded through this grant necessarily, but we also have a contract for Data Ticket. That's our third-party collection service, so that, once we have that product ready to roll, which is just basically pending approval on policies and procedures with Auditor's Office and with the Tax Collector's Office, that will give our cannabis code enforcement officers another tool to use, so that we, we can administer the fines that are outlined in our ordinance and have the support that we need to actually collect on those fines. So that is another tool that our officers will be able to add to their toolbox. Also not in this handout, and I just wanted to mention that we have received two new code enforcement grants. They're not related to cannabis, but the whole code enforcement picture and the resources that we have available, I'd be happy to come back next month and report back about these two new grants we have. One is for illegal dumping sites that we've identified over a couple of years but have been under-resourced to address. We now have funding to, to address some of those. And then we just got a pre-award letter from HCD for a CDBG grant that will create a two-person mitigation team focused on substandard housing and hazardous vegetation. And so those additional resources just add to the pot of, of code enforcement resources, but they're not specific to cannabis. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I believe you were going to take the mic back and finish off the presentation?
Perhaps I should have led with just a refresher about the mission and the vision of the Community Development Department. Our vision is to provide exceptional public service through three priorities. One is staff recruitment and retention. The second is staff professional development. And the third is fiscal sustainability for both the planning and the code enforcement divisions. If I had led with that, you would have, a few, a number of the points that Shannon had covered would have resonated as consistent with that vision. One thing I'd like to add, on the table, you'll see improved the number of permitted operations and compliance with codes and regulations. And it says unknown, tracked by another department. However, there was activity in the Planning Division as we accessed the satellite imagery from Planet to be able to view the cannabis cultivation permits who had done the opt-out program. We were able to view real-time satellite imagery of a lot of these very remote locations to verify that there was no outdoor cultivation taking place at that time, saving our team a number of hours, and also then using that time saved to then have onsite visits for the ones that required onsite. So that did in effect help to improve the number of permitted operations and compliance merely by enabling our staff to confirm and verify this compliance, which has improved over the years. And I think last year was the first time that we were able to cover all of our cannabis permits with our annual site monitoring visitations, and we are continuing to do so this year as well. The last part of today's presentation is to discuss a couple of policies that are currently in development within Community Development. One is the drone policy. As, I totally forgot your title. Shannon discussed earlier, we weren't planning on getting the drones until the Cohort 3, but we're able to get them a little earlier. So that has worked out great in that our current, our, our code enforcement staff has just jumped right into that drone training. However, what is lacking is the drone policy, because part of providing exemplary public service is a transparency for the public, so that we all have the same understanding of the rules and how we operate. So that drone policy has been in progress with our department staff and county council. A number of, one of the reasons why we're really focusing and getting it right is that a lot of the drone policies have been designed for law enforcement officers, which have certain protections that are not provided for code enforcement. And so county council has been doing a lot of due diligence work to make sure that those gaps in protections for staff are going to be included in that policy. The second policy that is, is currently in the, the review stage, or the actual data gathering stage, is a body camera policy. I would like to see this instituted for all members of our staff that provide onsite visitations with, with members of the public. We're currently gathering, we have a staff services analyst acquiring examples of different body camera policies from different jurisdictions, so that we can make sure that we're able to customize it to then meet our needs. The purpose of having this policy in place would then be to provide that transparency to the public of our activities, as well as a protection of our staff that will support retention of staff. Every so often, you know, it happens that we end up getting complaints that have no merit. Having a body camera policy with actual recorded data could help to support our response to such complaints. Both of these policies will be brought to the board for your consideration as soon as they are ready to be brought to you. That concludes our presentation, and we welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions, comments from board members? Supervisor Green.
Thank you for the transparency shout-out in that light. Would love to see this brief report posted with the agenda if possible, and if there's consensus. On the third page, I don't have page numbers, it looks like the third page to me, near the top, there's a table about project accomplishments. The third line item, compliance monitoring inspections of permitted cannabis operations, raised my eyebrows because, and the unknown permits issued and 800-plus active violations. So can you speak briefly to the amount of work being generated in our permitted industry? And, you know, if there's violations being noted, are they, are they attached to the permitted operation? Are they attached to other code, other types of code violations not related to the commercial cannabis permit? So that line item confused me.
Thank you. That does look like an alarming number. So in providing all of these onsite visitations, our, last year, our planning staff would go with our code enforcement staff as a team. We're not doing that the same way this year. But they go with an actual checklist of all the items that we need to make sure are within compliance. Typically, we'll find minimal things that are not in compliance, but are easy, easily fixed, like, hey, that shed doesn't have a permit, you know, something like that. The number of what are considered high severity violations were very few in, in these. And so I'll defer to our code enforcement manager, Marcus Beltramo, if he has anything else to add. But these active violations are not at the level of high severity violations. That number would be about five.
Well, I appreciate that, but some sense of character, 800-plus is still a chunk of change violations, especially if they ended up getting cited or notices to evade or something like that. So, and refresh my memory, the total number of permits we have in the cannabis space is what, 120, 140?
We're proud of 140 now.
Okay, so, you know, if you're getting a six-pack or a dozen, baker's dozen of violations for each and every...
Also, this is over a three-year period.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyway, any clarification on that would be helpful.
Mr. Beltramo?
Marcus Beltramo, Code Enforcement Manager, County of Lake. I also like to add that a lot of those violations are corrected almost immediately. So with any notice that we issue, there's a correction period. A lot of things are corrected almost instantaneously, or within the next couple of days. So they are minimal violations, and even if we were to impose fines or abatement orders, we wouldn't get to that point because the issues have already been corrected.
Next time we present an update, we will have a number of violations corrected within the period, so just to put it in a little better context.
Any other comments or questions? So I did have a couple of questions, and again, thank you for the presentation. Some of these policies that you're working on are policies that are, Sheriff's Department obviously already have. The difference would be sworn officers, where our code enforcement are not sworn officers, therefore are handled differently. Does that mean that the tool is also less, I don't want to say less useful, but less, provides less of a bolstering of the code enforcement toolkit to get the job accomplished because of the fact that it's going to have to be a different policy than what our law enforcement policy is?
Are you speaking specifically to the drone policy?
So whether it's the drone policy or the body cam.
So yes, undersheriff Bingham did provide us with the, the one, the policy that the sheriff's office has. We, because we're not looking at sworn officers, that's why we're looking at other jurisdictions to see if others have similar adapted body camera policies that will be more customized to our current needs in Community Development.
Okay, because I'm not so, I'm not so worried or impatient about the drone thing. That'll come when it comes. I think that one's a difficult, dealing with the legalities of the Fourth Amendment and so on. But the body cam, I really feel is an important aspect to create accountability and transparency. What kind of timeline are you looking at before bringing us the policy? Because it appears to me, based on what you've provided here, that you've already purchased body cams.
No.
At least, that's, that's what I read here. Services and supplies and...
Yes.
Talks about the drones, cameras, and then body cams, but I don't know how many that is.
We have two.
Which fits for the two code enforcement officers that this would cover. And so right now, we just have body cams that are just sitting there, waiting to be utilized. Just kind of wondering if you have a timeline of when you might be bringing us that policy? Because I think, in my opinion, of course, I'm not speaking for the board, that's an important one that I would like to see before us much sooner than later.
Okay. So far, we're still in the gathering examples from other jurisdictions. After that, we'll go into reviewing and seeing what we can glean from the different policies. So I'm just sort of thinking out loud. We then start conferring with county council to get something that they would consider viable, and then bring that to you for consideration.
90 days? Maybe 90 days?
October 1st?
No, that would be November 13th.
Thank you, we will go with that.
So I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I, to me, that's an important item for the safety of our, of our officers. And I agree, I've, I've reviewed body cam stuff in the past. I will say, the majority of the time, the complaint does not seem to show, but it creates that accountability, it creates that transparency, and I think it's important, especially as we're sending people out literally in the middle of nowhere. Kind of looking to see if that's a consensus from the board to try and get that back, if possible, within 90 days.
Whatever, I mean, I don't want to rush your timeline too, so you're doing a lot.
You know, I want it done right. October, November, most of the cultivation is done, so the sense of urgency is not going to be there to me. So sooner the better. I think you'll have a consensus for that, but I don't want to lock them into a 90 or 120-day thing. Let's see what the good code enforcements of officers of California are doing on that subject, and, and learn from that experience, and bring it back when it's fully baked, to use that cannabis reference.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with bringing it back when it's ready. It's a complicated process to get going. I know the Sheriff's Department does have body cams and other things, but sooner than later, it needs to be the conversation, because I agree with Supervisor Green of, we've got about eight more weeks, and then we're off into the next season. I know we have indoor, we have other stuff in the county too, so, but I think the major push right now for the, the industry is over in about the next eight weeks, you know, out there. So anyway, that's my thoughts. So hopefully, we can see something before the end of the year, for sure. But I hate to put a timeline on you, when we got, we're trying to draft two different types of things. The drone stuff, I think, is a little more complicated. Those are my thoughts, as soon as we can.
So you have consensus that we'd like to see it back when it's ready?
Absolutely.
And that's...
If it's not ready for you by November 1st, I can give you another update at that time, if you would like. But we will endeavor to have it done as soon as possible.
That sounds good to me.
Great, thank you.
The other thing, I was under the impression that we were ready, set to go with Data Ticket. Is this a specific to violations of cannabis that you need to figure out the details? Or are there still some hurdles to overcome in order to get Ticket, Data Ticket up and running?
Both with OpenGov credit card processing and with Data Ticket, and the way that revenue would come in, the tax collector and auditor's office have been very specific that they would like to review policies and procedures for our department in the way that we're going to handle that, those revenue streams before authorizing us to begin using the products. So as you also may know, we've been down an accountant, and so the, there has been some delay in the department on getting our policies and procedures drafted. We're very close to having a draft ready to go to both of those departments for their review.
Okay. And, and just for clarification, it was mentioned here that there was 24,000 plants eradicated, 509 inspections, 736 sites identified. None of those received fines? Or did they receive fines through a separate avenue of providing fines?
We have not administered fines.
Those are the questions that I have. I'd love to see those fines starting. I think that just gives a little less incentive to start doing the exact same thing that we just spent hours and hours and hours working on to try and dissuade them from doing so. So hopefully, we can resolve the last bit of the issue, so that we can really start putting out those fines. But those were my questions. I, I think the body cams are truly important. I appreciate the fact that we're continuing to receive this Prop 64 grant funding. I know when I reviewed the video from, I think it was 2020, when we first did this, there was a kind of an approval to get... there was a kind of an approval to get a, a report from LCOE on what it is that they are doing with the wraparound services programs that we are giving money to. And if and when they are ready, I, I think, I would like to see that that was already a consensus from the board at that point in time and we have not received that report.
Okay.
Because it is a large chunk of the amount that we receive from the grant.
We will work with LCOE to get that on it soon.
When they're ready.
In the...
So that's all that I have. Vice Chair Randall?
So Data Ticket isn't up in general or is, or are we just speaking? Because I, I thought I heard from the beginning that it was just, what you were talking about was germane to cannabis. And then when you brought, when you brought it up, it sounded like you said all of it's not being used yet.
Correct. We are not, we have not yet begun utilizing the Data Ticket service. We are in contract with them and as soon as we are ready on our end to administer those fines, they'll be ready to start collection on the fines. It's the internal policies and procedures with the other departments that are currently holding us up.
Did they give you a timeline at all or?
It's with us right now because we have been understaffed in our finance department. It's been difficult to develop the policies and procedures for how we'll handle new revenue streams without an accountant. So we have, we have an accountant now and we're working, we have drafts of those. They need just a little bit of tweaking and then they'll go upstairs to Genevieve and Patrick for their review.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? We have A on Zoom, if you can please provide us your name. I believe I remember, but I don't want to assume.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Angela Ammell. A couple of questions for clarification. Can cohort grant funds, are they or can they be used for abatement? And then also, there was reference made to the number of cases closed. When is a case considered closed? Is it after full abatement when the property is, there's no longer anything, no violations on the property? Is that when a case is closed or when the plants are eradicated? If you can clarify. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your questions. Is it possible to respond?
Yeah, absolutely. We close a case when violations have been resolved. And sometimes there's just a plant violation on a case and sometimes there's multiple. We have sometimes closed a case prior to full abatement, meaning leaving behind sometimes some materials, especially if the site has been abandoned. So in terms of full abatement, I would say 80% of the time, it's full abatement. Occasionally, there are cases in which some items, not plants, but some items could be left behind. And could you remind me of the first question again?
Cohort grant funds for abatement?
Oh, can the grant funds be utilized for abatement? Yes, they can.
Okay, thank you very much for your answers to that. I see no further hands up and no one in the room moving here, so I'll bring it back to the board. Any last comments or questions? I do appreciate the presentation. Thank you for the work that you're doing and looking forward to the policy for the body cams when you're ready.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.